Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It's July 30th at 6 o'clock. I want to make a note, we all have, so the camera is on us, we all have our masks on for everyone to see, but we're six feet apart. So council members, if you feel confident, the mayor's ordinance, or the mayor's mandate and the governor's mandate says that if you can socially distance, you don't have to wear your mask. I'm taking mine off, but you're welcome to leave your masks on if you want to. So with that, Councilman Smotherman, you have our prayer and our pledge.
If you would, let's pray. Lord, we just pray for our city tonight. We pray for our county, our state, and our country. We're definitely in a state where we need your blessings. We pray that you'll overlook us while we conduct this meeting tonight and will do service that makes you smile. In Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move into old business. You have ordinance 20027, Amendment to the City Code Regarding Discharging Firearms. This is second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Councilman Shacklet, Councilman LaLance, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Way.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, I should have note, should have mentioned that Vice Mayor Skels Harris is joining us by phone tonight. Madeline, I hope you're doing well.
I am, thank you. Hope you are OK.
All right, we have land use matters. We have for second reading ordinance 20OZ20 to rezone approximately .47 acres located along South Manny Avenue, south of East State Street, and north of East Castle Street.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Way.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we'll move to item 3, Ordinance 20OZ21 to amend the Gateway Village PUD formerly known as North Thompson Place PUD on approximately 5.09 acres located along North Thompson Lane, north of Medical Center Parkway. This is the second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Way.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we'll move to item 4, Ordinance 20O22, The Establishment of Shelton Square Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District. This is second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Way.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we'll move to on motion. We have the Journey Home CDBG Property Acquisition of 433 South Kings Highway. This is from Community Development. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. We're looking for approval on, well, actually two projects, but the first one is on 433 South Kings Highway. The Journey Home is looking to put that under our acquisition program.
Any questions?
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Way.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, all right, we'll move to item 6, Greenhouse Ministry's CDBG Property Acquisition of 222 South Bilbro Avenue.
Right, it's the same program.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Way.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, Ms. Glenn, thank you very much. All right, we'll move to item 7, Approval Expansion of Scope of Services.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and city staff. For your consideration, MFRD wishes to expand the scope of service under the current agreement with Target Solutions. The total of both Target Solutions software products will exceed 25,000 in fiscal year 2021 with a combined total of 25,737. MFRD started using Target Solutions as a training management system in March of 2017. In 2019, MFRD began using second software product from Target Solutions, Check-It, for managing inventory and medical supplies and equipment. MFRD budgeted additional funds in fiscal year 21 to spend using Check-It to include reserve apparatus, three additional locations, which is logistics, which is Old Station 4, the training facility, and fire administration. You got any questions? I'll try to answer them.
Any questions for Deputy Chief Tooms?
Mr. Tooms, is this, it says expansion of the scope of services. How's it changing from the current scope? Because I mean currently, if we use equipment, don't we build that back to, as far as medical supplies? Don't we?
This right here is more or less, it's kind of like a inventory. So like our state mandated inventory on medical, it helps us track all the stuff, even our, like our PPEs, our turnout, well, our SCBA, our bailout kit, it's a tracking device utilized for our personnel, for our department.
Is the inventory increasing significantly? I mean, what's, what's, what's driving this?
Well, especially on our medical side, we got a significant inventory now, and then we've got so many employees now, our inventory has gone, it's sinking quite a bit now. We used to even have a logistic, now we've got a logistic station, Old Station 4 on Jones.
This is a software system. So it's really, it's managing their training, and then what they're adding in is a module that manages also their inventory, so.
Right, so it's a software system.
The original software we had was Target Solutions, mainly did with the training.
Trying to remember what it's cost us, $25,000 or something like that, is that?
The Target Solutions part was $19,000, the Check-It is $6,000.
Okay. How much do we already have, what do we already contracted with Target Solutions for? Do we, do we already do business with them?
Yes, we've been doing business since 2017.
What do we already pay them?
Yeah.
What do, do you know what we already pay them in the other stuff that they do for us?
Well, the $19,000 is for the Target Solution just for the training aspect, and we're adding $6,000 for the inventory aspect.
Is the, is the? The only, the only additional money we're coming up with is $6,000?
It's going over $25,000. It's going over $25,000.
That's, yeah, okay. Makes sense.
So the $19,000 we were already incurring, is that correct?
Yes, it was 2017.
And so it's just a software upgrade for $6,000 in addition to what we were paying?
Correct.
I wasn't clear on that either.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Way.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the fiscal year 2020 JAG Program and MOU with the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office. I like to call this the Hiram Lester Program, because I think all the years I was on council, this is what Hiram would come do every year.
That is correct, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. For your consideration, this evening, as a request to approve the application for the 2020 Justice Assistant Grant Program and enter into a memo, MOU with the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department for the sharing of grant funds, the sheriff's department and city are eligible for $56,724, of which part, the city's portion will be $28,362. Remember, the Edward Byrne Memorial Grant was established in honor of New York City Police Officer Edward Byrne, who was killed in line of duty in 1988. Currently, and as you've seen in past years, our pattern has been purchasing tasers with this money, and we'll continue to do that, and with these, with this funding, we should be able to buy about 21 to add to our current stock inventory. At this time, I'll be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Chief?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Way.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now look at the sewer allocation variance for Panda Express. Mr. Gore, before we get started, I know a subcontractor who for years has worked with the city, with work with the Water and Sewer Department, also recently took over a bid with us to pick up brush without, throughout one quadrant of our city. Jerry Rollins passed away day before yesterday with Rollins Excavating, so I know you've worked with Jerry for years, and Rollins Excavating has been a partner with the city for a number of years, so our condolences and prayers go to the Rollins family.
Thank you for mentioning Jerry. He, I know he loved the city, he loved working for Murfreesboro, he had very close relationships with a lot of staff. When he and I first met in 1998, we were, the city was constructing Barfield Crescent Park, and I was a fairly new 30-year-old engineer that had moved to Murfreesboro, and Jerry was probably late 40s. He and I had a very interesting first meeting, and don't know if we cared for each other too much through that project, but as, as 22 years went by, Jerry softened a little bit, I softened a little bit, we became very good friends, and I trusted in Jerry and respected him greatly, so he'll be missed.
Well, Rollins is a great example of the public-private partnerships that you can have throughout the community, and sidewalks on Sulfur Springs Road, those were built by Rollins Excavating, a lot of the things that you see done throughout the city are all through that partnership.
He, he really took a big chance, honestly, putting together RecPro, which is the company that's picking up the brush and limb on a section of the city. We worked very diligently together to come up with something that was fair to him and fair to the city, so they're still doing it, and we've told them we've been, we're going to be very flexible with them as they move forward, and obviously, they're going to have some leadership transitioning going on.
And it's my understanding that even through the last several years, it was not uncommon to see Jerry running a skid steer or a loader on a lot of these jobs, that he was still working himself these jobs.
I've got a Facebook picture of him, he's on one of those RecPro knucklebooms, he's picking up bagged, bagged grass. So he was work, he was, he was out there picking up brush and limb for us just within the last few weeks.
Again, our condolences go to the Rollins family.
Thank you. Tonight, oh, thank you for the opportunity tonight, council and our council members and mayor. This is a petition from Panda Express, they're going to be located at 2122 Memorial Boulevard, is a one-acre site, zoned commercial highway. Per our sewer allocation ordinance, they are only allowed 2.5 single-family unit equivalents. Their restaurant, based on historical usage of looking at some other Panda Expresses in town, they require 4.8, so that is a 2.3 above what the ordinance affords them. So given the advantages of job creation and the sales tax and the property tax that that site will generate, staff is requesting approval for that additional 2.3 single-family unit equivalents at their location on 2122 Memorial Boulevard.
Any questions for Mr. Gore?
I had just one real quick. I know we talked about how we price car wash usage because of the amount of water they take to, that they put in the sewer. How'd you come to the pricing on this? I guess, I guess it was, I reached $16,000 or something like that?
Yeah, well, there's, since they're in our water system, so it's 4.8 times 1,200, and it's 4.8, that's the water component, and then 4.8 times 2,550, those are our standard connection fees.
Okay, gotcha.
So it's just a simple algorithm that, that aligns with city code.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Way.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gore. Our, excuse me, Amendment to Compensation Policy 5003, Temp 1, this is administration. Mr. Tendell.
Counsel, this is an amendment to our temporary emergency compensation policy. Under the federal act that we used in drafting that policy, public safety employees were exempted from the federal emergency paid sick leave act, and as we've kind of utilized that act over the last few weeks and months, we see that it would be beneficial to clarify exactly how the temporary emergency pay, pay compensation policy applies to public safety. So this is what the amendment does. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Tendell?
There are any, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Way.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, any licensing?
Yes, Mayor, we have a, a new business at a location that currently had a beer permit at 1453 Silo Hill Lane. It's a restaurant, and the ownership and name is changing. It does need to finish up its building codes inspection, so we would not issue it until you have approved it and they have completed those requirements. Be glad to try to answer any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Way.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any board and commission appointments?
Not tonight.
Any statements?
Not tonight.
All right, any other business from staff?
Mayor, I laid out a letter, this is information only tonight, but is to let you know that our financial advisor has found an opportunity for perhaps another refunding that could happen on October 1st, it's a specific call date, and with the rate staying low, we are doing some investigation on that, and so I laid this out for information, it will appear on a future agenda if we find it to be viable.
Well, 24 basis points is the rate that we're looking for, so a quarter percent, so please don't bring it back unless it's that low.
If I could only have a crystal ball.
Okay, all right. Thank you for doing that. Appreciate the staff looking into finding ways that the resident, I want y'all to realize that we budget 2.5% to 3.5% interest in any, any money that we can save below that, just saves money on the general budget, so. Any other business from staff? All right, from council? Mr. Martin?
I had one thing, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I did want to get an update, Mr. Tendell, related to, I don't know if anybody else got calls this week, but I got a few related to current retirees of the MED pension concerns over their plan changing, and I know we've not had any conversation about that, so I just wanted to get kind of an update from you and kind of where we were in that process, what, so I could respond better.
Yeah, the, and there's a memo that will come out tomorrow to council that explains a little bit more what we're doing, but the committee, the new pension committee met this week, and, and we did change the plan only for clarification purposes to, to make it very clear in the plan that the city's now administering the plan and not the electric department, but other than that, there were no changes made in the plans whatsoever. So from a pension plan standpoint, there's no change, no change in benefits, qualifications, or anything along those lines. So right now, the pension plan's all the same. Now, the employee health, retiree health benefits, those will transition and to some extent to the city, we talked about that in the last workshop, and we're still working on it. Some of that depends upon what we decide as a city to do with ours, our retiree benefit, retiree health benefit plans come September, October timeframe when we go back to revisit the budget, depending on how the pandemic situation works out. So right now, we don't have any new numbers, because nothing's changing, we're working very hard, and as we talked about again in the last workshop, to, to make sure that people get at least through the end of the year without anything changing on their plans. Some will have to change, some of the retirees, small number of retirees are on a state plan that just can't continue, and so we'll transition them over, but we're going to make sure that from a cost standpoint, a premium standpoint, that there's, there's no change in that, it's a nominal amount, but we want to make sure that happens. So that's, that's where we're at right now. Some of it's going to depend on how we, how we go in the future as far as health benefit plans, but to be clear, the, the health benefits that are provided to retirees are not part of the pension plan.
Right.
They're annually, every year, decided on by council, they're subject to change every year, just like any other health insurance plan, rates change, lots of different things change about, so, but we, the plan always was to transition them into the city's health, retiree health plan, so that's, that's what we're working on now.
Just a general comment, I know there's some concern about loss of benefit, specifically with health insurance, dental, or, or life insurance and those types of things, and I know that's not easy to work through as we're talking about transferring it to the city, but just from my perspective, to the point that we can make those folks whole as they were with MED, it would be really important to me for us to do that from the standpoint of, you know, however, we have to find a way to do that.
Yeah, and we, we'll try and do that. I mean, we, we have what's called OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefit Program that we have, and we have certain parameters we have to stay consistent in, so we'll, we'll continue to work on that, but as I said, health plans change, and, and they'll need to change, there's benefits that come from our plan that aren't offered in, in the plan that they have now, so.
Right.
Change isn't easy, particularly when, I understand, in retiring fixed income, but they've always been subject to change, and this is the time where we'll have to integrate them into our, our health plan.
So that's something that does have to come to the council for us to discuss?
As, as we, yes, as we integrate them into our plan, we'll, we'll probably come back in the, well, we'll probably have the discussion in the September timeframe, because we need to talk about September, October timeframe, because we need to talk about what we're going to do with our health plan, and the potential increase that we need to address in that plan that we deferred until the September, October timeframe.
I guess their ballpark, how many people on that plan currently?
Forty-seven.
Okay, so it's not a large group per se?
No, it's a small group.
Okay.
It's a small group.
Well, again, just emphasis, from my perspective, I think whatever they had in place, when they had, I understand it can change year to year, so I, I get that, but I, I do think there's a sense of, if I were retired and I had been on that pension plan for a long time and had certain health benefits, I would be uneasy, you know, about a change, and so I want to be sensitive to that, and the quicker we can get information to them to put them at ease, I think the better off we're all served to do that.
And we're, and we're working to do that, we're getting the information we can quicker. As I said, some of it depends on what's decided by the city at a later date, so we can't tell them what we don't know, and just, I want to be clear, because it gets confused, and when we talk about the pension plan, we're not talking about health benefits.
I see.
Pension plan's something separate. Health benefits are, are provided annually, so we'll, we'll do what we can, there are certain parameters we just have to stay within, and, and we'll make the accommodations that we possibly can, but it, it will come back to council, you know, as we, as we move forward. Now, the, making them whole towards the end of the year didn't necessarily need to come back to council, because it was such a small amount, so, you know, we've been administratively, we've been able to make that adjustment.
Does that include, that no changes till the end of the year, does that include the, the benefits that the $5,000 in the dental and vision?
The, the programs, what we were, we're working with the, the insurance companies now, and I'm hesitating, because I don't, I don't believe the state plan provided those. The only thing that really has to change now is the state health plan that the retirees that were pre-Medicare were on. That needs to change, because the state won't continue that program, we're not part of that program, so we can't have those retirees stay on that program, so they'll have to transition over to ours. And I don't know if, I think that's a separate dental and health or a vision pro, plan, and if that's the case, then the plan will continue, so we'll take, we'll continue to look at those. It's, it's, you know, we'll, we'll do what we can, we're trying to hold, hold the line and, and make sure that they're not changing, but as I said, you know, there's some things that will have to change, and they were subject to change, and, you know, they're likely to change.
I'm like Councilman Martin, I'd, I'd like to know before, you know, the decision made and we go forward, I'd like for council to be in the loop of that decision.
That's, that's what we're working on now, it's, you know, our, other than not having a choice with the state plan and trying to make accommodations there, we're, we're not making any changes. Our effort is not to make any changes until we can get the information, we need to bring it back to council, and some of that's depending on the budget and the budget questions that we have.
Mr. Tendell?
Craig, can you give us a breakdown, when you get a chance, of the cost of those 46 individuals?
Cost for?
Total cost is a cost if we decide to do something as far as the city.
But ye, yes, I guess it, it depends on what we decide to do.
Exactly, yeah.
We know, for example, how much to continue the life insurance policies they have, so we can come up with that number, but, you know, the premium, we don't know yet.
Yeah.
Because we have no idea what it's going to be come September, October.
Madeline's got a question.
But yeah, we'll, we'll provide the information as we go.
Okay.
It's, it's a bit incremental, because some of it depends on decisions that are being made in the future.
Mr. Tendell?
Yes?
I have been, I have been receiving calls also from these retirees, and all of them are telling me that they've already been told that they have long are telling me that they've already been told that they have lost their life insurance, and they need to get out and get some more insurance, is that life insurance, is that correct?
I believe the letter went out that said that we are looking at it, that that's not an offer that, or that's not a policy that the city has on its program now, but we have pricing to see if we can continue that, and that's what we're looking at.
So, but I mean, so right now, these employees do not have life insurance?
I'd have to check, I don't, I believe that the policy is, remains in effect, nothing was changing before the end of this month, so nothing has changed, all the policies were in effect until July the 31st, so I'd have to check and see on the continuation, but I believe it's continuing through the end of the year.
Okay, because all of them said they have been told by the city that they don't have life insurance. One person that spoke with me, I think, was 90 or something, but I agree with everyone, we definitely need to look into that because it's nothing more devastating with some of these people, that's the only life insurance they have, and I'm a retiree, and a couple of weeks I'll be 68, and it'll be devastating to me thinking I have at least $5,000 in insurance, and I have none in life insurance. Now, if that happens to be the case, and these people do lose their life insurance, I want us to look at, like Mr. Martin said and Mr. Shacklet, making them whole, if we have to give all of them $5,000, that's just my take, but I'll wait and hear what you're saying.
Is it possible to treat them as a separate group, just to have a group policy for that group of individuals, you know, and treat them like group, like group health and group life insurance?
There's, it's possible on some policies, I think they have, right now, if they're on the, if they qualify for Medicare, they have a supplemental policy, and it's possible to carry that forward, there's pluses and minuses to that as far as healthcare providers and such, it's possible to carry separate policies on a smaller group, as long as the carrier will do it, and then there's question each year of pricing on that, that policy.
I guess I'd put my two cents in to just kind of say, I mean, I think going along with the idea of trying to keep them as whole as possible would be where I would stand on that too, just, I mean, I think, you know, if that's what you're doing, looking through to see what the costs would look like, I mean, and if that's what it takes really to see, to have them treated as a separate group rather than melded into our city's plan, I'd be willing to explore that.
Yeah, my viewpoint on it is very much like Ronnie and Bill and Madeline and Rick and Kirk's all saying, I mean, I agree that, I think these people have been promised something through MED for several years, I know that some of the policies change annually, and that's to be expected, but if there could be a separate policy or a group policy that would be available to them that would be different from the city, I don't think that would be out of the realm of possibility, and certainly we need to keep intact the dental and vision coverage that they've had in the past, because, I mean, that, I think they were relying on it, and I think they felt like that it would continue, and I think it would have continued if they'd moved over to MED or middle to the city, so I do think that there's a bit of, you know, standing behind, this transition's been very complicated, and I think we've done a wonderful job, or staff has done a wonderful job of managing it to this point, and I think this is one of the hiccups that may have slipped through, and I think, I think it can be worked out, but I would like us to try and do everything we can to make whole what we implied that we would.
All right, I agree. All right, yes, sir.
One more topic, again, the phone's been ringing off the wall for the last couple of weeks about the insurance as well as the, what's going on with the EMS service, and I know I was listening to the radio yesterday and listening to Mr. Ketrin, Mayor Ketrin, for the county, talking about the EMS service, and it's challenging for a council member to answer any questions when people ask you, and basically, I think, at one point, we were kind of like, let's put this on hold, and then it kind of like got continued, and now it's continued to the point that we're getting quotes and stuff on what the service would cost, and I keep being told it's not going to cost us anything, I don't know how you outbid somebody who's going to do it for nothing, but the, but I still find it interesting, but we're being asked a lot of questions, and I thought we were going to have a workshop to discuss it at some point, and that would clarify what the intentions were, and I think we heard maybe one side of the story, but I don't think we ever heard the whole story of what's taking place here, I think we're fortunate tonight, we've got Chris Clark and Carl Hudgens here from the county, I think there's really some questions that I've been asked that, you know, we as a council, I would like for us to discuss and have some conversation on this because, and I think we as the council need to have some conversation on it because it seems like the snowball's rolling, but I don't know that any council members have weighed in on how they feel the job that the county's performing, and even the need, because of all the calls I've received, I've never received a call saying EMS was not doing a good job, and so I guess my point is tonight, is are we available to have some discussion on this, or would y'all like to put it off and have a scheduled date that we can have a discussion on it that'll be public so that we don't have any sunshine violations of talking between each other, but we've got to have more information than what we've got.
Well, I think that we, I think that we, several council members had said that they wanted to wait until all the proposals came back, the proposals were graded, and then the proposals we presented to all the council with all of that information, because, you know, I know the proposals came back a couple of weeks ago, I've not seen any of them, and intentionally have not wanted to see any of them until it goes through the staff process, so like the questions that we're getting, you know, like, what happens if someone doesn't pay, you know, some of the questions we've gotten is that, you know, what happens if someone who doesn't pay their bill and now a private company's going to want to collect that money, well, you know, my question was, well, what happens now, well, what happens if someone, their doctor is at Vanderbilt?
Well, I think now we've got a chance to ask those questions.
I just don't think now's the time or place because we don't have the information to be able to ask that, you know, I think, I mean, I don't know what we ask questions about right now until we get the proposals to come back, I mean, that.
Yeah.
Tell me if I'm wrong with that, Craig.
No, it's, you're not wrong, the discussion we have with councils that we would go out and gather information through an RFP process, and we've done that, it was only this week, it was only earlier this week that we sat down and reviewed those as a team to get through and get down to two that we thought were viable, and so we're still in the analysis phase, so I understand there's been discussions, it's been, it hasn't been on our part because we have done our best to try and administratively gather the information so that we can bring to council comprehensive information, now there has been a lot of discussion, but it's not been on our part about what this really entails and what benefits it could have to the city, or what costs it could have to the city, we don't know that, so we're going through the analysis phase, and we're still in that, but if we can get through that and get it in August or September in a workshop setting or in a special meeting, if council wants to call that, then we can do that, but we were clear about our process going out, and that's what we've done, and it's taken, it's taken a while, but, you know, the last few months, everything's taken forever, and there's nothing we could have done about that, so, yeah, I don't think tonight's, we'd be prepared to talk too much about that because we're still in the analysis phase.
And Eddie, I think it would be good, I mean, I talked to our EMA director today, and really, probably ended up talking to Chris about every other day, I talk to him just about as much as I talk to my wife now, so I think that once we get that information that comes back on the proposals, I think it would be great to be able to have that conversation with, you know, the current provider with the county and see, here's what's being proposed to us, and then here's the current service, maybe, you know, that's something that we all learn from that comes across is what, you know, what's coming across. Again, I've tried to stay out of it, I know we had seven proposals that came back, or six proposals.
That's I think.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, I don't think the politics need to be involved, no matter what's printed in the paper or ads are in the paper, I don't think it's our responsibility to get involved, and then I think it goes through the staff process, then staff gives the information back to us, and then we need to poke holes and study that, so, I mean, that's where we've been to this point.
Yeah, the challenge for me is trying to answer people's questions who think it's a done deal already, and that's because, I mean, the perception the public has is the city's proceeding full speed ahead with getting in the EMS business, and if there's anything we need to put to bed is we're not at that point, I guess, because that the, and I know the county didn't even bid on it, so obviously, I think their feeling was if we're not providing a good enough service today, and you think that somebody can do it better, why would we bid on it, because you already think that somebody's going to do a better job than we are, I think there's some economic questions that go way beyond just whether or not it's good for the city, because I think there's also some impacts that are going to take place on the county, that we're county residents as well, and if we don't address all those issues as far as the impact that it's going to have across the board, you know, it may turn out to be great for the city, but it may turn out to have a substantial impact on the services provided to the county and the other municipalities within our county, and it may also have an impact on what, truly, I think it's going to have an impact on whether or not some hospitals even decide to come to Murfreesboro, which would ultimately have an economic impact on the competition between providers, and so if one of them winds up getting the contract for the ambulance service, I'm scared to death that the other one's going to say, well, if we don't get the ambulance customers, then we're probably not that interested in coming to Murfreesboro, so I think there's, there's things that are economic that are way beyond just whether or not it's financially feasible for us to get in the ambulance service.
What I'd recommend, if you can, is y'all get, what I've been doing is I've gotten questions like, you know, what happens with Medicare Medicaid patients that, you know, aren't paying their bill, what happens with that, we had a question about what happens if my doctor is a St. Thomas doctor and Vanderbilt were to get the bid, can they, can they only take me to Vanderbilt hospitals, or, you know, the question about employees, or, so what I've just been doing is I've been making a list of questions, and then I send those to Craig, so, I mean, I'd recommend as y'all get questions about those.
Are we getting responses to those questions now, or are we just waiting?
I'm just sending those to them and say, you know, this is things we need to talk about as this comes across, but it's not a done deal, I mean, I think we need to see what information, it's one of those things you don't know what you don't know, you know, we didn't know what Murfreesboro Electric would be, would come across until we had that discussion, and I think that's what we'll need to have the discussion for.
Mayor, could we, I mean, could staff give us some kind of a timeline, a, you know, some kind of process that we see this, this decision-making proceeding, just some kind of idea so that, you know, we could have some idea, and then the other thing that I would encourage, this is a pretty substantial decision for us as a community to make, and I would encourage us to have some type of public comment or input, a hearing that we can hear from the public to ask us questions, we're going to get them individually, I know that too, but I'd like to see a more deliberate kind of process for making a decision and not just something out there that, you know, sometime, somewhere, some, you know, because I was told at one time that it was going to be later on in the year, maybe the first of next year, that we would even be considering this, and then it, then something comes around where it looks like it's proceeding a little faster, and we haven't had an opportunity to talk about it.
Well, just to be clear, it's not proceeding any faster, and there is discussions that need to be had, and so, you know, if we're talking about, I don't think we can get the August timeframe, if we're talking about September, October for the initial discussion, then there would be a process to go through for the next few months to evaluate that before we get on to actual, a decision before council, so the notion it's, well, as the mayor said, it's a done deal, I don't know where that would come from, we're in the process of exactly what we told council to do, and that's to gather your information so we can bring it to you, but that's a process that takes time, and it's been extended time, and we couldn't help that, but we're in that process now, we're evaluating it, until we get through that process, we can't answer questions, we can't consider it in the full context of the economic impacts on the larger scale, we can't do that because we're gathering the information now, that was the direction from council from workshop that we had several months ago, but.
Do you still see it at the end of the year, or do you still see the timeframe to be, something to be brought to us, do you have any estimate?
Nothing's, I mean, it's not going to be certainly a two-week or three-week or a month cycle, it's going to be much longer than that, because as you said, I mean, if council desires to do a public hearing, then that's, that's going to add three to four weeks to the process right there.
You feel like, Craig, that some, sometime between now, or between now and into September, that's when we would end up as a council having that discussion?
Sometime between now, you know, the September workshop is probably good now, we have on September workshop a potentially a review of the budget, depending on our numbers and how they come in, so, you know, how much council wants to take and how much time they want to take, or if they want to do a special meeting, we can, we can take a look at that, or we, you know, we may go to October, either with a budget question or the ambulance question, you know, we try and be sensitive as to what we put on a workshop for the afternoon meetings, but, you know, as a practical matter, we are looking at least towards the end of the year and probably the first of next year before we can really get to a point where council's making a decision, so, you know, we have honored the process, we have gathered the information, we haven't put out a lot about it because we were waiting for responses. Now, so, a lot of the questions and information that's coming is not being generated by our discussions.
Well, and I think, you know, I'm going to, as y'all know, I've been involved with this for six years now, no one likes change, I mean, change is uncomfortable, and so when you start talking about things that have been done, you know, y'all know, y'all have heard me say this, when someone says, well, that's the way we've always done it, I'm like, well, that's not a good answer, so I think the issue, Bill, is that we have honored to say, we're going to let staff go through that process like they always do, they'll give us information so we can make an informed and educated decision to be able to answer questions, to be able to ask the public what's going on, but, you know, just like with some of the decisions the council's had to make over the last two or three years, there are other outside forces that happen with that, that, you know, there's, that cloud the situation up a little bit, so I think what we've tried, or what I've tried to tell staff is stay out of all that, let's get the information, present that to council, and then the council can make an educated decision.
I just have some concern because obviously there's several EMS employees who are hearing the same rumors that we're hearing, and they're conveying them to us, and they're concerned about whether or not they're going to have a job at the end of the year, and so if nothing else, we need to do a much better job of conveying the process that we're going through and how we're doing it, because currently, we've got, we've got employees that don't work for us that we're scaring to death, and there's also the concern about, for me at least, with the information that staff may or may not be working off of because of the skewing of the numbers, and I've tried to gather data from both city as well as from the EMS service, and there's such a wide discrepancy in the amount of response times and stuff like that, which was, the initial thing that I was told was the true benefit was response time, and we're dealing with, you know, P-SAP, primary P-SAPs and secondary P-SAPs, and there are several different factors that play into what the response times are based on where you fall into that process, and so I just hope that the information that we're working off of is good information, because I know there, there's no doubt in my mind that there are those who are trying to leverage this to their own personal benefit, and I don't, I don't want that to happen.
Well, and just to be clear, there are a couple of different issues, and they do get wrapped up together sometimes, but in our analysis for EMS services, they're separate, and what you mentioned at the end, Councilmember Smotherman, has to do with dispatch, and that's no longer something that we're, when we talked about co-locating and dispatch and things like that, I think there's technology that's been talked about that will resolve those issues, that we're no longer focusing on the dispatch, that's not part of the analysis that we're necessarily playing in, it's important, it's an important part, so obviously it comes in, but a lot of that information isn't what we're looking at when we're looking at, you know, ambulance service, and that's a different consideration entirely. And that's, that's a different consideration entirely.
Craig, can we do this?
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm so glad to hear you say that. I really, really appreciate you making that statement about, you know, you all are not meeting because phone calls I'm getting is telling me that Craig has been meeting with Mayor Ketchum, and been meeting with the Rutherford County Ambulance Service, and saying it's like a done deal or whatever. So I'm so glad, Mayor, that's, that's clear though, because, and I'm so, I respect you for taking that stand that that is clear, that no meetings have been conducted. I would like to see, since this is going to be such a touchy situation, and, and I'm so glad that the people they work for, the county right now, can be at ease because, you know, we have enough stress with this virus. And then to think you're going to lose your job, that's a lot of stress. But when this does come to the council to expedite things, so we won't talk about something, then we're going to wait a week or month, and then we're going to come back and talk to get our disinformation. When we are ready to discuss it, I would like to see the county and us come together in, at one time. So we won't say the county's saying this, they said they're not saying this. Our information is correct, our information, but if we all sit together and discuss it, I think that would be a good thing. And also, since this has gotten around town so much, and it's, I guess, the flavor of the year here, I would like to see that we not have this discussion in a Wednesday workshop, because so many people, they want to hear facts. So whenever it comes up, I would like to see it come up instead of council. So people who are, do not, cannot go to the Wednesday workshop would be entitled to know exactly what's going on.
Well, I think, yes, ma'am. And I think that's something, as we go through, to get that information for us to be able to talk about. I mean, that, you know, there, there's all kinds of things that, that Councilman Smotherman and Kurt, that we, you know, that have been thrown out there, that, you know, I'm, Madeline, I'm all for sitting down with the county and finding a way that we can talk about how we can all work together. But the bottom line is, when we talked about co-location for almost two years, we all worked together. I'm, I'm looking at the, the budget amendment here that Mayor Ketchum signed September 19th for $118,400. And I'm not trying to throw stones, so I'm just saying, these are the facts. We all agreed that, hey, this is what was going to happen, that couldn't, couldn't ever get negotiated. And then four weeks ago, the 911 board voted for, instead of spending $118,000, voted to spend $415,000 to do the same thing, to run cabling to the Southgate Building. So there's all kinds of things that we need to talk about, that, you know, we've tried to take the high road on a lot of this. And so I want y'all to know, if, I'm perfectly fine, and Chris and I have talked, that talked, and I see Carl sitting there, we'll be happy to talk about those things, and we continue to talk about those things. But we need to get the information as a staff, we can make our decision as a council, and, and then figure out how we can, we can work with the county. So.
Cheers, hon.
Kurt, you have anything else?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Madeline.
Can we do this? Can we, can you expedite this, Craig? Can we have something in, about the end of August, where you're getting together with staff? Because I think we need to be included in what's going on. Because right now, we don't know what's going on. We're hearing bits and pieces.
We, we can certainly try. I mean, some, some of this is gathering information from third parties. So obviously, we don't control that as well as we do. And, and sometimes they're not available under the current circumstances with staff as they would normally. So we can certainly make every attempt to do that.
Thank you.
I, I'm, I'm going to make a comment. This is, this is kind of out of left field, that this is coming up tonight a little bit. And I think without Chief Folks being here, it's, it's a, I question a little bit of how much detail we really ought to get into tonight. But, you know, I'm, my, my gut feeling is to tell that we can expedite this, but on the other hand, I'm questioning whether or not I would ask staff to put a whole lot of work into this, at this point, just from a standpoint of just whether or not it's worth it to go through a whole lot more work. If we can't, if, if, you know, I said, I'll be honest with you, you know, look, I said this at the original meeting at the workshop, that I'd be dang disappointed if, if, if this couldn't get worked out. And when I voted to, to have those RFPs put together, I, I thought that it was going to get worked out. That's what I thought. I mean, I thought that the city and the county staff were going to be able to get together, and that there would be some changes made, and that would be the end of it. And I, I can, I'm spending a whole lot of hours, just like I said, I didn't want to have to do, getting in the middle of figuring out what the difference is between a six-point lead and a 18-point lead, and...
Twelve.
Gurneys, and bags, and sheets, and whatever. I, I, I don't, you know, that's not what I want to do. We have a, we have a medical director that is supposed to be doing that for us. And I, I just am, you know, I, I just want to put it out there, I, I don't know what to say to, to as far as where we go from here, and maybe tonight's not the night. But until we got a chance, maybe it's a, maybe it's two meetings from now, and just have Chief Folks be here, and we get, you know, we, you know, we'll talk, get more out on the table. But if, if there's six, five, or four, or five, or six people on this council that, no matter how good they think that RFP might look, might think that it might not be the right thing, big picture, for the city to do this, then we shouldn't ask everybody to put a whole lot more work into it. And I don't know where everybody else is on this, because it's a...
Rick, I agree with you. I don't want them to put working, anything. We just need to know what's going on.
All right.
We don't know what's going on. We, we're getting hounded by the public, but yet, we're getting bits and pieces, and we don't know that.
How about we...
I'll say this, listen, and I, I do want to, I want to defend staff on this a little bit, from the standpoint of, the one, one thing that I did say at that time was that I thought it's an obligation to look at, to look at options. And, and honestly, I think that's what staff is doing. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm not at all casting anything toward staff from a standpoint of doing what I think we said to do at the time, and what has gone on, was transpired since then. You know, it's kind of one of those things, like, I, I view it as an obligation that I would look at options, right? I mean, I, I think that's an obligation of, of a city council person, that we would see that, you know, if there are options out there, that we ought to view them. And the more I've kind of thought about this, it's like, but if, if, if I'm not willing, or if some, if the council is not willing to make any change based on what those options are, because of bigger picture things, you know, we could look at options for keeping everybody in their house because of this COVID thing. I mean, literally, we could, you know, we could say, we think it's safe for everybody in the house, and I want staff to come up with options, and nobody can leave their house. And what could that look like? Give me six different options on that. And I'm not going to agree to any six of those.
So, Rick, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What happens if a group came in to the, to a Murfreesboro resident, they said, we want to put, this is just an example, if they said, we want to put 15 ambulances in Murfreesboro, we want to hire 90 employees, we want to service your entire city, and we're not going to charge the city one dime. And, and so say that, that, you know, the average person in, in Rutherford County pays, what is it, Chris? $44, $44 a year in their taxes. And so say that a proposal came in that that person didn't have to pay $44 a year, should we not at least have the discussion to get the information to talk about it?
So we talking about lowering taxes if, if it goes, if it happens? I mean, is that the...
I mean, I think that would be up to the county to make that decision. But my, my point is, we're, we're, we're on the 50, we're on the 50-yard line. We've asked staff to go through this process. And you talk about losing credibility, we've asked, not only, I, I appreciate what the county talks about, but we've asked six people, or seven people, to submit proposals to the city. They've put work into it. And then, then halfway through the process, and we've not even looked at it, I, I think as a city, we lose credibility when we tell those people, nah, we changed our mind. We at least need to see what the information is. I mean, that's, so, I mean, I, I know we're having the discussion right now, but we don't have any information to make a decision. So I mean, what if the people came, somebody came in and said, look, we're going to pay you $5 million a year to do, provide this service. Now, that's a discussion, I think, you have to sit with the county and say, okay, you're not going to have to pay $7 million a year inside the city, can you allocate those funds outside of the, to the county to improve the service in Smyrna, Laverne, Eagleville, and the unincorporated areas? So I think there's the opportunity that even if something changes, we can partner with the county to continue to improve the services. But we don't know what we don't know.
But, but we're talking about getting into a service, and Adam, I, I think this is a question I've got for you, is, isn't there liabilities that the city's taking on by getting in the, deeper into the EMS service that we currently don't have?
The, the, we're still subject to the government, Governmental Tort Liability Act, with respect to, in the same way that we are with the fire rescue operations that are run now. So there...
But with more...
Is there, is there, is, is there, because you're, and then it depends also in terms of how the contract is structured, or how the partnership is structured. So who is the, who is the, who is the entity providing the service? So is it, is it the city providing the service, and city employees providing the service? Or is it an entity, a private entity that the city contracts with to provide that service? And the answer to that question will determine what, if any, additional liability exposure the city would face. So it, it, it depends on what, part of it depends on what the structure is.
Just so for clarification for me, let me give you another analogy.
Sure.
If, we've got a contracted brush company...
Yep.
Right now. If they were to do something, that they were to be involved in an accident or something, wouldn't it be a potential possibility that somebody would sue the city because they're contracted through the city, even though they're a separate company?
Yes, that's possible. But our, in that circumstance, our liability has, is capped under statute. The, so, for, for an example...
But it's liabilities that we wouldn't have if we didn't have that contract.
No, if you were arguing for...
They, they could sue, but I don't think they were, they're suing, I mean, if, if a truck blew a stop sign, we would not be liable as a city for, for that negligent driving. And that's, that's up to them. I guess we conceive something that we might participate in, in an activity that where we would have some degree of liability. But, you know, the fact that someone possibly could sue us because we contracted with them, that's always a possibility, but they wouldn't succeed.
In the EMS, in the EMS situation we're talking about, these people will be our employees, though, right?
We don't, we don't know, we haven't decided what that model is.
Was it RFP, that they were going to be employees or not employees? I mean, the Fire Department thinks that they're going to be Fire Department employees, I can tell you that.
For, well, I, I can't speak to what rumors are floating around, or intentionally, or out of lack of knowledge has been spread around. I have no idea on that.
Well, maybe that is just that.
Well, if, if they're saying that, I mean, I think the RFP, I will tell you, the, the RFP that went out was that it's a, it's a private company providing a private service, and the employees would be private employees, they would not be city employees.
Okay.
I tell you what, what bothers me.
That's good information.
Hello? Hello?
Go ahead, Madeline.
I, I tell you what bothers me more than anything. The misinformation, okay, let's put that to the side. If we go this way, sounds like we're going to let another company handle everything. And I'm hearing it's not going to cost the city a penny. Okay, which doesn't make sense to me. But let's say it doesn't. The, the company that's going to have the service, what bothers me more, it's going to kill, absolutely kill, the little man. Because right now, the county, when they can't pay their bills, they ride it out. I understand last year, they wrote off millions of dollars. But as a city, somebody's going to have to make money. So this, whoever we let them have the service, they're going to hound these people, they already on fifteen times, it's going to kill them. And so that bothers me more than anything. Seems like this is going to kill the little man. And they've already, they're already being beat to death. They can't afford anything else killing them. They just can't afford that. Good answer.
Mayor, can I?
Yeah.
Time in. Everybody else got a chance to say something? I'm, I feel like I'm being left out.
Absolutely.
Um, I, I do, I do just want to, this is just my perspective, everyone may not see this the same. But I, in the council, in the workshop meeting where we talked about this, I, I do think I felt a lot of concern and reservation about the possibility of making this change. It was a very big change. And that's okay, that's, we have to make hard decisions all the time. But I think where the confidence came from in seeking the RFPs, or I think RFQs is when we were talking about those initially, was, let's get some information so we have some idea about what we're talking about. I think part of what I hear is the disconnect between what information do we have, and how long is it going to take us to get a complete package, and do we really need a complete package before we weigh in on it? Because it could be, to Councilman Lance's point, that we could get, if, if you all have information of the bids, let's have a conversation about that, and see what that spurs. Yet, it may not be fully vetted, but that would put us in a position where we can defend the fact that we're being asked, and we know we've received this information, rather than wait another 30 or 60 days until you've got it to the one-yard line, and then we're, you're expecting us to make a decision.
And, and we can do that. I mean, we, we have to be somewhat cognizant of the fact that the, we do do an RFQ. So what we're requesting is qualifications in, in a sealed proposal. And so, the companies submit a lot of information, and there's some clarification that needs to be had. So right now, in this process, we are scheduling interviews with the top, the top candidates to get those clarifications, so that we can come in and have a full discussion. If we come in and just show what we have, and, and we're not able to answer the questions because we don't know exactly what something means that they put in a proposal that we would get in an interview, then all we're doing is cycling back to, to a couple of proposals, two, three, four proposals, we don't know yet. So we have to have certainty, I think, in what proposals we see, received, and the qualifications that they put in those, and what they really mean, to get some feedback. Now, we're not at the contractual stage, that's where really the rubber meets the road, when they're willing to sign up in a contract that they can be sued on. But at least we'll be far enough down the road to understand everything that's in the RFP that comes back, and be able to sit down with council and then share that information. We are just this week, and I, and I think, I think the last one was scheduled today, to set the interviews. And I don't remember what the dates were set, I'd have to ask. But I think over, they're over the next couple of weeks. And, and again, we don't always control those calendars, because they're large corporations that have other things that they need to do, too.
Well, to the mayor's point, if, if we feel somewhat committed to continue the process at this point, we're going to feel even more committed the more time we spend. Just making a point.
I, I, I think there's the credibility issue, which absolutely, I, I think we have to recognize of the continuation of the RFPs. But, but I think once the RFPs have been completed, then we need to have another talk and, and discuss, like you say, that we don't need to get to the one-yard line if, if, if the will of the council, whoever that might be sitting here at that point, is. We need to understand that, you know, that there's a lot, a lot of questions that are still outstanding, that, that need to be answered, not only to just ease our minds, but to ease the public's mind, so that they understand that, you know, what, what we're doing is in best interest of the city, what we're doing is in best interest of the county as well. And, and, you know, I don't represent the county, I represent the city. But, but at the same time, I am a county resident, and I absolutely understand that there will be physical impact on the county if we were to make a decision that would have as significant an impact as what this potentially could have.
Mayor, if, if I may answer a question, I think that some people have approached, but not exactly asked, and that is to clarify what the status of these proposals is right now, under state law. And that is, is that they are not, they are confidential until a recommendation comes before the local governing body for an award of a contract. So they, that, that's state law, and that's, that's part of the reason why... So they, that, that's state law, and that's, that's part of the reason why you don't have, that's the primary reason why you don't have information about these proposals at this point in time.
Adam, so you're saying the only time we're going to see the definitive recommendation is one proposal?
No.
Or what?
No, when, when the, when, when the recommendation is made, all the proposals become public records.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you will see, you will see all of them, but you won't see them until there is a recommendation and there's a decision for the council to be made.
Yeah, in other words.
And then, and then you can have as much discussion as you want about that. It's not to say that you have to make a decision on that date. I mean, so we can, we can work through that.
Is there typically in a, in a request for like a bid like this? I mean, is there typically interviews and things like that to have to get clarification? I mean, I, I guess I'm a little bit curious about the, the, you know, if we don't know what things mean in, in what they've sent us, then how did we choose that those are the top ones for us to call?
Well, we have enough information to distinguish between the different, the different bids, or proposals, I should say. So we have enough information to distinguish.
And get a general idea.
Yeah, and get a general idea, or, or much more than general, but, but specific idea. So now we're going to dig into specifics. But to answer your question, yes, it's quite common, particularly when you're doing something complex. And we regularly interview large building projects and have through, two, three contractors come in and, and bid on those, or interview to, to build those.
The, the process is different than the, the request for qualifications or the request for competitive sealed proposal is different from the invitation to bid process where you're just looking at the lowest bid that's responsive from a qualified bidder. That's not what this process is. This is where, yes, cost, cost is a component, and it can be a significant component. But there are other factors, and you need to be graded in accordance with a matrix to determine who that, what, what entity, what, what proposer is going to, is going to come out on top in terms of recommendations.
So what our parameters that we set up for something like that are typically a little more broad. And then the proposals come in, then, then like a bid, you have very specific, it needs to be, you know, this specific material and all that kind of stuff. And then a bid comes back very specific. When a proposal, we just ought to put a big picture thing out there and say, tell us what you think.
Well, sometimes, but you can put very specific things in there that you, you know, there.
Require, like requirements?
Yeah, very specific requirements. There are kind of no, you know, we don't, we want, well, we want it to go this direction, we want it to do this. Tell us how you get us to that. So you can be, you can be both specific and general in, in a request for, or an RFQ to use the more common phrase than what we use by statute.
Okay.
Thanks for that clarification. That's helpful.
It's very helpful. All right, any other questions? I want to close out just by saying, even though we may not agree all the time, that there's an election on Thursday, so next Thursday. And I want to urge the people to get out and vote. But I want to publicly say, after serving with the council members I've served for, for seven years, I appreciate what those who are running put yourself through. It is not a fun time to be an elected official. So it's easy for staff members, you guys get paid to do this. We do this because we love it and we want to make our community better. And so I want to say to the gentlemen who are sitting up here, I could not have picked a better group to serve with. And so thank you for the service that y'all have put in and willing to put yourself out there to, to do it again. So the constant theme I get back from people now, when you're dealing with pandemics and protests, is why in the heck are y'all wanting to do this? And the thing I tell people is, somebody has to do it. And the people that I sit up here with, I could not be prouder to serve with y'all. So I want y'all to know that. With that, we'll stand adjourned.
And I think we all hope that the challenge is getting to be less.